You guys ready?
Yes, sir.
You're still loading. It's six thirty. We will call the March seventh, twenty twenty four Planning and Zoning Commission to order. You just gotta push the button. These are new, fancy, special. Alright. Roll call. Brooks. Mike. Brian. Thomas. Melissa. Rob. We have a quorum. Item number three, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Can we move the consent calendar to the discussion?
All of it.
Well, just the, the two tracks.
Item number one or item number two, or both of them?
One and two, yeah.
Okay, so we will move those right below five.
Move to accept with the change on the consent calendar.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda with those changes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, approval of minutes of the February fifteenth, twenty twenty four regular meeting.
A rezone application was presented for twenty-five oh one East Augusta Street. This city of Brandon is, it should be the city of Brandon is.
If you're gonna change that situation, is and currently both mean the same thing, so that's redundant. You can take out the word currently.
Wow. I mean, anything else like? You wanna argue about the font?
I move that we approve the minutes as amended.
I second.
Motion in a second. Is there currently any further discussion? No. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item, we'll call it five A, the consent calendar. Okay, Brian?
So on both of these items, is this? On both of these items, is this intended to be city park area?
So the city is buying this piece of property to put in the sewer main. We call it the east side sewer. Part of this is in city limits and part of it is not in city limits. So we have to plot these as two different plots because they need different signatures. Once these go through and once we have purchased the property, then we'll replat it all into one and then we'll annex the rest of it into city limits.
I assume that, but I just want verification because one of the, one of the properties does not have access as it's plotted, so understanding the intent, so I'll make a recommendation to accept this.
Move to approve the consent calendar. Do I get a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, public comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission may do so now. Unless you have an agenda item coming up and then we'll get to you. Seeing none. Item number seven, a rezone application for nine twenty-four East Redwood Boulevard. Do we have the applicant here? Stays in storage?
Some background, so this is a proposed rezone to go from general business to heavy industrial. Currently zoned general business on the lot are storage units. Storage units would not be allowed to be constructed in a general business lot currently. And it's my understanding the applicant wants to add additional storage units. The way to do that would be either under light industrial or heavy industrial. And they can expound on it a bit more, but we talked through it and they went with heavy because the setback is, I think it's the rear yard setback is less than heavy than light and the surrounding property to the north is all heavy. So it was just continuation of that. Letters went out. Looks like we do have some neighbors present, so I'll let the applicant talk through their situation.
Go ahead. If you would just push that button right there, the red light will come on. And if you give us your name and number or name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Corey Coonert, nine two four East Redwood Boulevard in Brandon. Looking to rezone to add more storage units on the south side and on the east side of the property. Just want to be able to build a couple more and then go with the setbacks. Wondering if we can get the variances down to less than what the, the south end is. They're at currently twenty-five feet. Looking to get ten or less.
Well, the variance would be a different application. That is not this. This is just a rezone. Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Just wondering if they need that variance to do what they wanna do. Could they come to us with a variance subject to it being rezoned or something like that so that, is there, procedurally, is there a better way for them if they need to have that, or is it just better to do it one thing at a time?
One thing at a time, I think. Rezoning it would allow them to do something. The variance would be a different thing to prove, so, yeah.
So then also, right now, the way it is with general business, if a tornado or a fire came by, according to the lady I talked to, I wouldn't be able to rebuild. So that'd be another reason to rezone it for that purpose also.
Yes. Well, I mean, you're in the middle of an industrial park. Everything around you except for the stuff on Redwood is basically heavy industrial. Anybody else have any questions? Hold on just a second. Anybody up here have any questions for the applicant? Okay. If you could just give your name and address for the record, that would be wonderful.
My name is Roger Van Orde. I represent the Redwood Plaza Association. We're on the south side of the request. And really, our, our questions, I think the people have answered most of them. We wanna know who owned it, what their intentions were. We do have, we are concerned a little bit about the setback because there is a fence there that butts onto our property. We just wanna make sure we're aware of what the request is and how it will affect us. I believe this will not affect any of our taxes or anything like that. It's a complete rezoning. But the one thing that we are most concerned with, we have a shared driveway. And we share that with MedStar. We share with Redwood Plaza Association. And we wanna make sure we can, we will communicate with the owners because if it goes into a heavy industrial, that's probably only two to three inches of asphalt. It could be torn up pretty quickly if they start bringing in cement trucks and stuff like that. And we wanna find a good resolution to work with them on how we would proceed with that. So part of our intent tonight was come find out who the owners were and what their intentions were. So I wanted to share that.
That driveway that's leading back, Paul, maybe you can, or somebody answer this question, is that a shared driveway or is that a part of the parcel A?
Based on Minnehaha GIS, I have not looked at the plat, but it appears to be part of that parcel of land. Whether they have a mutual access easement or whatever between the properties, I do not know. But it is part of the, this property that the driveway back.
Would a mutual access easement be filed somewhere?
Yeah, they're typically on a plat. They could be their own separate document, but they should have a mutual access agreement as well as far as the condition and who needs to, you know, remove snow and replace the asphalt.
Okay. Does that ring any bells to you?
No, but that's, that's not a comment, so. But anyway, I think what we're asking is, and we will meet with, with the owners to make sure that we understand what that means. We have just repaved our entire parking lot at great expense. We did know that part of our group has heavy trucks and stuff, so they poured concrete. The rest of us poured asphalt because it's just typical car traffic in our parking lot. We just wanna make sure we have a good understanding with them on how to proceed and what needs to be done. So that's part of our reason coming tonight.
Okay.
Alright.
Perfect. Anyone else? Okay, anybody else up here have any questions or concerns or thoughts?
Question for the applicant, um, what type of, what type of storage units do you have? Are they various sizes? Are these larger storage units or are these?
So right now, I've got fifty-two, ten by twenty-fives, and then I've got ten five by fourteen, I believe. And then the rest is just outside parking, RVs, campers, boats. And then our goal is to go a little bit bigger, probably fifty foot, maybe fifty-five foot storage units, so twelve or fourteen by fifty, fifty-five. And if we just can't get the setbacks changed, then we'll just do something similar to what we have, just a little bit bigger.
Okay. Anyone else?
Do you let anybody rent these as like a shop? Or just only just storage?
Just storage.
Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve. Sorry, recommend approval.
Motion to recommend approval to City Council for the rezone?
Second.
And a second. Now, just clarification, this is a rezone. If you wanna do something outside of what's in those parameters, you would have to apply for a variance. That's a whole different thing.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There you go.
Thank you.
I have a clarifying question just so we're ready for the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
So the frontage road itself, is that the drive then?
The frontage road is Redwood. That would not be the drive. It's the strip that goes back to your-
The strip that goes back?
Yes.
Okay.
And based on what we have that is on your property, there's probably, hopefully, mutual access easements over it for everyone else. But you'll wanna pull the county, talk to the county and get a copy of the plat.
What it looks like right now is that that driveway is an extension of that lot back there.
Right. Yep. Very good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright. Item number eight. This may actually be a first for me.
So the applicant is here. Before you, on the table is the letter he received from Minnehaha County talking about the use of the property as an agritourism business. It looks like they have approved that business for this property with those conditions one through seven. So we've talked back and forth for several meetings about what's the best use. Do we add a use? Do we rezone? Do we try to figure something out? So this is, we kinda talked about last time, is this use better regulated by the county than us? So he's talked to the county and he's back to report on his progress.
So, just so it's on the record, this is a petition for exclusion from the city of Brandon. Lot one, block one of Howie Edition. Okay. You wanna raise alpacas? You want people to come buy stuff from you?
Yep.
And you wanna be in the county.
Yep, because yeah, cuz of the zoning. We have a problem with the zoning being in the city, so I think it was discussed that it's gonna be easier. At some point, it'll be brought into the city in the future and then just do it all at once. So that'll make it simpler then too, then rezone that little plat of it.
I sure hope so. I guess anybody else have any questions or concern? I mean, we have reviewed and talked about this. This was an idea that came up during one of our last meetings.
So just a procedural, this is a recommendation to the council as well? This is a council action?
Correct.
Do a recommendation action?
Yep, correct. It's like the annexation process, just in reverse. And the council at their next meeting will discuss by resolution. They can do it then, everything else, so.
My only question is if there's any jeopardy or any issue with this having been annexed, deannexed. If it does sometime in the future, presumably if it came back to be considered for the city again, it would presumably be a larger parcel that's probably being looked to be developed. I'm just curious if there's any potential for an issue because of back and forth.
I don't think so. I mean, once it's a part of the county, then it's just one large parcel of land. And if it were to come back in the city, it would come in as a bigger parcel of land that would be dealt with at the time, so.
It is plotted separately, so my guess is you'll probably wanna replat it altogether with the county once it's part of the county again.
That would be something for you, cuz you're basically gonna have to do different parcels of land.
Yeah.
So like when you bought it, when you go to sell it, you're gonna have, it'd be easier if it were one parcel. So you just have to replat it with the county.
Okay.
Alright. Any other discussion?
I move to recommend to the council to, what's the word, deannex?
Petition for exclusion.
Petition for exclusion of this parcel.
Motion and a second for the petition for exclusion from the city of Brandon. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. There you go. You're no longer a part of this.
Well, no, council has.
You're no longer a part of this commission. Yeah, this island.
Alright, thank you very much.
You bet.
So just a note for people that may come back and watch the video, the city does not make it a general habit to deannex property. Once you are in the city and the city is providing you services, whether it's water, sewer, streets, everything else, generally, you are part of the city and we like to keep you there because we,
Yes.
it costs us money to pay for all those things and by you being in the city, you are paying your share. This is a very rare circumstance, so. And don't think this means that we are willy-nilly looking to exclude property.
Well, this parcel had no services, had no road, had no, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, the footnotes. Item number nine. You guys get to choose whether or not to accept a planning and zoning resignation from Thomas Nichols. I mean, if they don't accept it, I don't know what's gonna happen, but. Well, everybody's out. Do we, do we need a motion to accept this resignation? Yes?
Thomas made the motion.
It'd be better off if it wasn't from the person resigning, yeah.
I would like a detailed explanation.
I don't know if you're owed one. How about that?
Feel free to share whatever you feel comfortable with. Don't feel free to share anything you don't want to.
You can just say you don't like sitting next to Alyssa. That's perfectly acceptable.
As I explained to Barb, my wife has a twin sister that lives about a mile from us in Brandon. And her and her husband are gonna move to Michigan, Manistee, Michigan. Cuz that's where their son lives. We wouldn't have any more relatives here in Sioux Falls. So we decided to move in that area too. We're gonna be one house away from them. Our house has just been built. And it's on Lake Michigan in Manistee. Beautiful area, forests, rivers. You think you got deer here. They come out from, they hide behind trees and they come out. Anyway, it's a beautiful area and I have almost all my relatives live in Michigan. So it's a good move for me. So we will be flying out March twenty-fourth. My brother-in-law and my wife's twin sister are gonna be driving to U-Haul. And they're gonna go through the upper peninsula and back down to Manistee. If you don't know the map of Michigan, there's the upper peninsula. Manistee is over here. I was born in Saginaw, Saginaw Bay. And there's Traverse City. All along this coast over here on Lake Michigan are resort towns. Manistee is a resort town. And a long time ago, when I was getting ready to retire from General Motors as electrician, I, we had planned to buy something up in that area, Potoski, Traverse City, any of those resort towns. And then have another place down in Florida. Well, this is the first part of that.
Perfect.
So is this your last meeting or?
No, I got one more.
One more meeting. We'll miss you. You've been on plan zoning three years, right?
I need a motion in a second.
I will move to, I will move to accept.
Motion in a second to accept the resignation of Thomas Nichols. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Well, I mean, there you go. Thank you. Thank you for your service, sir.
Patrick, what does this mean for the empty seat? What?
So, so what this does, it obviously creates an empty seat. So what we do is, I don't, I don't think it was in the paper this time, at least I didn't notice it, but there will be a publication in the paper saying we have a vacancy. What you do is, on the city's website, there will be a, if you go on forms, I think it's under the other forms, there is an expression of interest in boards or committees forum. You'd fill it out and you would submit it back to the city administrator. Eventually, we'll come up with a deadline. From there, once it's submitted, assuming it's within that deadline, it'll be reviewed by the mayor. He'll make a recommendation to the city council and the city council will appoint somebody to it. For the people wondering, you don't need any special education or training. You don't need to know the ins and outs of zoning to some, you know, have a master's degree in zoning. You don't need to have some special expertise. You just need to be someone that lives in the community, that cares about doing a good job, that cares about the growth and development. City staff, we are here to, we can train you, we can get you up to date on the zoning terms and what the different, what a conditional use permit is and a variance and all that stuff. So just come with a willingness to learn and we'll help you get there. And if the mayor selects you, then you'll get on the commission and we'll get you in touch with these guys and they'll help get you up to speed. And you'll be on the board and you'll have some, some good meetings, some tough meetings, but it's a good, it's a good group, it's a good process. So hopefully, it'll be enjoyable for the right person that wants to do it and serve their community.
And I have another question. What, how much time is left on?
So Thomas's term has one year left, so the person chosen by the mayor will have, will be serving out the remainder of that one-year term. And hopefully, you like it during the one year, then you would apply again to be reappointed.
And then a term is how long?
Three years.
Okay. Very good. Item number ten. Discussion item, R-one versus R-two, single-family attached side yard setbacks.
I will turn it over to Brian since he is.
Somebody approached me, they're wanting to do duplexes on separate lots.
Okay.
And so they were just asking about R-one versus R-two from a zoning standpoint, so we kinda talked through the issue. And that's when I realized that our ordinance, the side yard is ten foot for an R-two for single-family attached.
Okay.
But in an R-one, it's the standard seven foot. So in R-two, we have five yards, sorry, five-foot side yards. But I think when we talked about it, we increased that to ten foot, but I think that was intended for multifamily housing, fourplexes, eightplexes.
Okay.
Not when we talked like duplexes. I said I'd bring it back for discussion here if that's truly the intent that we have a bigger setback because it's a, it's a duplex.
You know, I honestly, for a side yard setback, there's really not a whole lot of difference between a duplex and a single-family home. I don't know why we would have ten feet versus seven. We were probably all sitting here when we did this and I can't remember why we did it, but there you go.
Yeah, likewise, I don't remember this discussion per se, but I don't think my recollection of the intent was to have a larger setback on the non-party wall in this situation with single-family attached in R-two versus R-one.
I know we had to make accommodations for the party wall to be a zero-foot setback. But I don't remember why we would have changed it. Maybe it was always ten feet and we just didn't do anything with it. I don't know. But I would guess that, I mean, they should marry up. I mean, when you're talking about the size of a duplex and the size of a single-family home, they're about the same thing anyway, so. Anybody else have any thoughts on that? I mean, if we wanted to change it, Patrick, it would just be a matter of?
Text amendment, planning and zoning public hearing, city council two readings, one a public hearing, twenty days if it passes.
Okay.
So to note, R-three, the setback is similar, similarly, the zero or ten on a single-family attached. While we're talking about R-two, it is that way in R-three as well.
But R-three would be a, a bigger, could potentially be a bigger building, which would make sense for a bigger setback, but for? Well, single-family attached, it's still the same size, still just one, one dwelling regardless. But for?
You could have a longer row of single-family attached in R-three than R-two.
But okay, so there's, there wouldn't be a difference in R-three if it was a, like a eight-plex or if it was a I was thinking, when you said R-three, I was thinking like, if it was like an eight-plex, you'd wanna?
So R-three would not, based on this, the lowest is five to thirty-six, so you could not have a duplex in R-three necessarily. But yes, whether it is five to thirty-six, the setback would be zero wall, ten on the side, so.
But yeah, so, so for me, if it was a, you know, thinking like an eight-plex, having a ten-foot side yard would make sense for like fire and things like that, cuz you have a bigger building. But for a single-family attached, that, I don't see why that would be a bigger setback than a single-family detached, I guess. So I, I guess I can see the difference between a, an R-two and an R-three. I would see, I would see on the R-three, because you're talking about a bigger building, having a bigger setback. But I, I guess I, I'm kinda the original question, wondering why we would have that bigger setback.
I don't have it in front of me, but I see the R-two is here and our, and our pack in the spot. So I would think that a apartment building per se would fall under the multifamily dwelling definition, so that would have different setbacks based on that, right? This refers to single-family attached.
Yes, at that size, probably in R-three, you'd be looking at a row of townhouses.
Yeah, right. Would it, would it be simpler if we added a category similar to the R-one? So in R-one, it says, "single-family attached, two on two lots", which would be basically a duplex on two lots. If we put that same verbiage in the R-threes, sorry, in the R-two's and the R-threes. That way, you know, we're, we're talking duplexes. We're not talking fourplexes or eightplexes. Those are, those are different animals in my mind. For my, the way I look at it, a duplex is a duplex, whether it's in a R-one, an R-two or an R-three. And the setback should be based on what we would allow for a single-family in any of those. So a duplex in an, in R-one side yard should be, so duplex in an R-two or an R-three should be five feet.
When you say duplex, do you mean the same thing as like a twin home or that's?
Two houses attached to each other.
Okay, I always thought those were two different things, but you're using them inter, you're using those two terms.
They're the same thing. They're the same thing. It's just that they're on, that they're on, yeah, that they're on separate lots. Correct.
No, single-family attached, there is more that can fit into that, right? Because like row houses, townhouses, so we don't wanna exclude that, right? Do you just wanna separate out duplexes basically? Is that kinda what you're saying or?
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, if there's two dwellings attached to each other, like, like a duplex. To me, those should, those should be allowed the same setbacks as a single-family house. Now, when you start to get more than two, when you get into fours and six- Now, when you start to get more than two, when you get into fours and sixes and eights, then we may want to provide a, a bigger buffer around them, like what we have in the ordinance, the, the ten feet. But I don't, I don't think, uh, I don't think a dwelling should be, um, should be held to a higher standard in the R2s or the R3s than that same dwelling structure in an R1.
Yep.
I agree with that.
Right, now listen, I'd just like to, um, make a point. I have worked in jurisdictions where there is a different tree and duplex and a, and a twin home. Twin home would be the one, and I'm not saying to say that what we're doing is different, but the twin home would be the one where, where the two separate lots, duplex would be one lot in, in the same home. So the one to the left would have been a twin home. In, in years past, when I've worked in, the other one would have been.
Typically.
I, I agree, and Realtor.com agrees with you. A duplex is two, two units on one lot, they share the yard. A twin home is two units on two lots, even though they might touch each other.
And typically a duplex has one owner and a twin home can have two owners. So sometimes there's some things that are built differently, but that's kind of, so like they had up there. If it's on one parcel, it'd be a duplex with one owner. If it's on two parcels, it, it could have separate owners.
And I don't know if that makes any difference as to the side yards in our discussion here, but just so we're using the
I mean, I think.
Proper lang, the proper words.
The setbacks, I think, are dictated by size of building, height of building. Uh, I mean, even more so than length of building. I mean, so, I mean, we want those, when we build a building taller, we want bigger setbacks so that we have more control over. I mean, seriously, if we, if somebody wanted to string thirty-six units in one row, that were all the same height as a single-family home, I mean, would it matter at the end of that building if it was seven feet on either side?
That's, that's the question.
I know.
Well, the issue could be the number of people wanting to use that side yard, or the maintenance people who want to use that side area to get around to do all the mowing. Well, maybe not so much snow removal in the back, but.
Uh, seven feet will accommodate most mowing of residential lots, so. I mean, we do dictate setbacks based on height requirements, so. I mean, really, yeah, I mean, the biggest difference between those two drawings is typically one's a rental and one's not.
So under the R2, we've got the multifamily at ten feet, single-family at five feet, and then single-family attached at ten feet. I guess if, if we wanted to add another line of item, you know, for single-family attached slash twin home, where we had, had a separate category and then went to, now on R1, it's at seven feet. I wonder if that's because you have, you have two buildings that are attached, so there's twice as much likelihood of a fire. And so you want to give yourself a little bit more, cause every foot counts quite a bit on a fire. So if you want to give yourself, instead of going to back to the five foot, if you went to the seven foot, like that'd match up with the R1 then. Cause on R1, you, it's a seven foot on an attached. And if you wanted to, cause I, I, I think on the single-family, you can, you know, you can have, you have twin homes or a, you can have townhomes, like a fourplex. And on a fourplex, I don't think we want to go less than ten feet. So we're really only talking about single-family, twin-home style, and that's, whether that's a duplex or, or a twin home. Cause they could have the same owner, so it could be a duplex. But, you know, so if we said, "Single-family attached slash twin home", and we went to seven feet, is that kind of, is that what we're saying? Is that the question of the day? Cause I don't think on a fourplex, we want to go less than ten feet. And on a single-family detached, we're at five feet. So we're really only talking about duplex or townhouse. And we're talking about going from ten to maybe something less, but I, on R1, we set seven feet. And I think for fire, we probably don't want to go less than that. That would match up with R1 then, if we went up to a twin home.
So Patrick, explain to me, a single-family attached and a single-family attached individually-platted lots surrounded by commonly-owned space.
Probably not a ton.
Single-family attached, surrounded by common space, we set that up when the people behind the stakehouse, those apartments, when they went to sell them off.
Single-family attached, individually-platted lots, surrounded by commonly-owned space would be.
So each of those units, they.
That drawing on the left.
As an individual property.
But that would be that drawing on the left.
Well, it's more on that because it, it's like parking lots and other areas that are common.
They have.
Between the owners, right? That's the difference.
In Brookings, they have townho, houses that are, the individuals own the house and the garage, and that's it. And then the rest is HOA. And I think that's probably kind of what this is talking about. So you only own the footprint. And then.
This is designed for more than duplexes. This is designed for.
It's more of a, a complex.
Yeah.
You know, and, um.
Of townhomes, whatever.
But, yeah, uh, but if you're still, uh, not getting bigger than two units, I think that could fall into the, the single-family attached slash townhome conversation. If we went to seven foot on something like that, if it was slash townhome, I don't, I don't think we want to go to a fourplex and have five feet or seven feet. I think we would want to stay on a, a ten foot on that. So I, for me, I'm really only thinking about a townhome type situation. Townhomes slash duplex, but duplex, um.
So Patrick, I would defer to you on this. What would be the easiest thing for you to write to accomplish what you've heard discussed, making a townhome a seven-foot setback instead of a ten-foot setback? A duplex, whatever you want to call it.
If we wanted that to be spelt out specifically, we would probably have to add the use itself to R3. But, I mean, it, it shouldn't be too difficult to write. I'll go back through and listen to the, the tape to make sure that I accurately, hopefully accurately get it on there for the next draft.
I don't think we're talking about R3. I think we're just talking about R2.
Okay, good. Well, somebody mentioned if we wanted to extend it across.
Same, same thing happens in R3.
But R3, you can't go less than a five unit, right?
You can't unless you wanted to add that as a use.
And I don't think we need to add another, I don't think we need to add a smaller use to R3.
I think you could just write it for R2.
So I'm sorry, in R3, you can't build less than five?
This only has a single-family attached dwelling as being five to thirty-six. So there's conceptually, two to four would be a no.
So then I think we're, we're only talking about R2. And we're only really talking about, for me, I, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable with anything bigger than a, a townhouse or a, a twin home type situation.
And it would be easy enough to copy and paste language from R1 into R2.
Yep.
Yeah, my only, my only concern is if, a fourplex could be to attach first level, to attach to upper level. So that to me, that's a little bit higher density. Um, so I'd be, I'd be nervous just doing a, doing it across the board.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Brian Jackson, Van Musker Companies. Don't have a dog in the fight with this, just kind of clarification. As I'm listening to your discussion, I guess, I, I, I just looking for a clarification, when you talk about if it's a townhome, whether a three-unit townhome, a four-unit townhome, or a five-home, unit townhome, they are still single-family units. And they're still going to be governed by the occupancy numbers of a single-family residence. So I guess I was just looking for clarification on why you would want to have larger side yard setbacks for something like that versus a twin home.
Because you got a, a bigger building, and so for every unit you add, you add more opportunity for fire. And so my, my thinking is, cause I think the, the biggest push for the, this was before I was here, just hearing the conversations. But the push to go from five foot to seven foot on R1 was primarily for fire, or that was a big conversation for it. So I don't want to go backwards on that, especially when we're talking about bigger units. A fourplex is more likely to have a fire in one of the units than a single-family home. So that would be my reason for anything over the, uh, two-unit property, I think we should stay with the ten foot. It's for that reason. So that'd be my difference, my.
Okay, yeah, like I said, I don't have a dog in the fight. I guess the only thing I would point out is that those structures, and I very, I looked to the Paul and Patrick over here is, they're still built to the same fire code as, you know, with firewall and everything else. With the, and I guess I defer to Rob on that too, is if they have the, the walls in between the partition walls, those are probably firewall too, I don't know. But that's, I just want to say, that's just to clarify, as you're looking into that, I'm not building anything like that. But somebody's going to come and ask you in the future why you're, you're saying that, so I just want to throw that out there for conversation.
Technically, your outside wall's still built the same as an R1 house.
All the inside walls will have firewalls within them.
Yeah, but you're.
Just like those twin homes would have to have a firewall as well.
You're, if you look at a, an R1 home, you have one house you have to get around. Where if you have like a fourplex or bigger especially, then you have access issues to get around that and, and different things. You, you, yeah, fourplex, you could have privacy fences in the backyard on every one. And now all of a sudden, you're trying to get firefighters through four.
It'd be like those townhouses down at, uh, by Venice, they all got fences in their backyard split.
So my, my, my thought is stick with the ten foot on a fourplex. And if we want to have the discussion go down to seven, I'm, I can see that. But, but there, I, I would say there's a difference between a fourplex and a single-family home on access and other things for, for fire. Keeping that ten feet makes sense to me.
I, I agree. I'm, I'm, for a fourplex, ten feet's fine. Um, but I think for a duplex, or a, a pair of twin homes, sorry, I don't want to use the term duplex, cause that's not the right term, but, but two attached on two separate lots, to me, that should be five. Five-foot setbacks.
R1 is seven.
R1 is seven.
Want to be consistent with R1.
But R2 is five. So in, in R1, the, the setbacks are seven. You can put two of them together and keep the same side yard.
At seven, yep.
At seven. So what I want to do is, in R2, why can't we have individuals with five foot? And do the same thing, put two of them together, keep it at five foot.
Then when they butt in R1, you'd go back to seven on that.
Yeah, anything against an R1 is minimum of seven.
And from my recollection, the seven feet on an R1 was a number grabbed out of thin air because we used to do something called a lot coverage rule. Developers wanted to put bigger houses on smaller lots, so to do that, the city and the developers at the time came up with setback numbers that they kind of agreed upon. Um, I don't know if there was any science behind the seven foot, or if it was just a number they said, "That sounds good to us", so.
The seven foot's fairly new, right?
No, seven foot's been around for twenty years or more. Um, I think five foot is in the International Building Code. Yeah.
Five foot's in the code, yeah.
So, I mean, seven feet was not necessarily something that was based on anything other than, "Sounds good."
Sounds to me like. Five foot's for the wall, I mean, most houses around here because of the elements, we have two-foot overhangs.
Yep.
So that's really only five foot up at the roofline. I think Tim may have used these words. I can't remember for sure, just a little bit ago, but basically in a way, to treat a twin home, pretty much the same as a single-family standalone home, as far as the lot and stuff, so. That would kind of fit with what we're talking about. Act, look at something for twin homes specifically. Or, yeah. Or if there's a way to somehow include that, a good enough definition of twin home to put it in with the single-family detached. Because it's if it's limited to units and it's, maybe it'd be easier to slip it in there somehow.
Okay, do you, do you have enough to write, Patrick? And you can bring us something at the next meeting, and we can say yes to it?
Yep, us hopefully. Uh, if we have to go back again, then we'll go back again, but hopefully.
I mean, just make sure that they aren't here to review your penmanship or your.
Yep. Maybe Thomas's, it sounds like it's Thomas's last meeting, so I think we'll discuss it.
Yeah.
For hours.
A twin home is different than a townhome, cause twin home, there's only two. Townhome, there could be a row of however many.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. Item number eleven, uh, building permits for February. Are those numbers reversed? New homes to date, twenty twenty-four?
It's, two, we're actually up to nine as of five o'clock today.
But we didn't have twenty, we didn't have twenty new homes in all of twenty twenty-three, did we?
That's what's showing there, sir.
I think you're inflating your numbers. I don't know.
But that's, twenty twenty-three is total for the whole year, not twenty twenty-three year to date, we had twenty. No, there is for the whole year.
Yes, well, well, we are. Well, well, twenty, go ahead.
Yeah, so in December, there was some building permits that were inputted into the system. So those are showing as last year, but they're being built this year, so. It's a little confusing. Some of those twenty twenty-three numbers are actually twenty twenty-four.
Okay, things are busy, yes?
We're up to nine, we're killing it.
We're up to nine.
Nine, we're killing it.
Yep.
Sweet. I love it. Anything else you can build?
Jimmy John's.
Okay.
We're moving forward on that.
We've had a lot of conversations with a lot of builders this week, so there will be a, a lot coming to town.
Awesome.
Both on housing and retail and everything else, so we're, we're getting a lot in this year.
That'll make up for, I mean, we weren't real busy last year, so we're gonna be busy this year.
Wood prices are astronomical last year.
Oh.
Well, they still are, but everything else is caught up to O S B's going up again.
Okay. Very good.
One thing before we adjourn, at the last meeting, Alyssa mentioned the status of the comp plan. In your folders on your desktop, there is a draft, current draft of the comp plan. I don't have it in the packet just because it is not ready for public consumption, but you all wanted to see a status update on it. I am open to your thoughts on the direction it's moving. Kind of the, the new stuff in there from what wasn't in there in the past is I wanted to put more of a fiscal analysis in there. Properties and the people that live in them generate property tax and sales tax, that's how the city pays its bills. You would hope that at the end of the day, that the property and sales tax generated by a property would pay for the services to it at least. So you would at least break even, you're not doing all this stuff, but losing money on what's being developed. So there's some work on there to see what the break-even point is on certain things. What drives a lot of property and sales tax versus what doesn't? What kind of blend we would need to put in a neighborhood, so at least a neighborhood could come out on top. Just to kind of help with the development process, what we look at, sure, mixed-use development sounds right, but what, what's the blend that at least makes sense from a fiscal standpoint? So we can continue to maintain roads and get them plowed and extend sewer lines and water lines and everything else people want. So that's kind of the newest addition to the comp plan. And if, since it is on your desktop on your computer, if that is something you would want to take home with you, I can try to get it down to a size that I could email it to you, but it might be a little large, just cause it is currently a hundred pages long.
I can't wait to see it when it's done. Okay.
Fun summer project.
Yes.
Along with all the building we'll have.
Perfect. I know. All right, having no other agenda items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned at seven eighteen.